I will call the meeting. Call the meeting to order. We'll take a roll call vote first. I want to introduce our newest member, Sarah Tenetti from Stockbridge, who is appointed. Welcome.
Thank you.
So Allison.
Yes, here.
And you, Jason?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
Bill Vogt?
Here.
Bill Fields?
Here.
Diane?
Yes.
Sarah?
Here.
Rich?
Here.
And myself. We have our packet for minutes on January 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. So a motion by Bill Fields, a second by Andy. Any discussion? Hearing can say none. Roll call Allison.
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Sarah Tenetti?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Steve?
Hi.
It is unanimous. Peter, we will turn it over to you.
Okay, thanks everybody very much, and thanks for being flexible around me doing this by Zoom. What I thought we'd do tonight is start with the student update, go to the principal updates. Then I've got two relatively quick approvals. And then a little update on branding and the website that I'd meant to share at our last meeting. Then the bulk of the meeting will focus on our budget presentation. And then I'd also like to share some DEIB updates and then any updates from the subcommittees. So Mirabelle, tell us what's going on in the, or at the high school from a student's perspective.
Sure. So the first thing that we're really excited to share is that our student and adult advisory board has been up to some really cool work recently. So the board is composed of five subcommittees, each of which focuses on sort of an aspect of the school. So we have our environmental subcommittee. They are planning to plant some new trees in our orchard, which is great. They've been collaborating with our middle school environmental club, actually, to paint a mural down at the project's route based kind of by the elementary school. And their biggest focus has been to lessen the use of single-use plastic in the cafeteria. They actually had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Dillon about that and how to move effectively with their work. They are planning to coordinate with the SOB Wellness Committee to provide healthier and fresher food options in the cafeteria using produce grown from Project Sprout. So speaking of the Wellness Committee, moving on to the Wellness Committee, they will be collaborating with Environmental to offer healthier and fresher food in the cafeteria. And they also worked with our sort of justice team to do outreach at the middle school about substance use, which is a really important issue. They received some training from Casey Wilton, who is Monument School clinician, on how to effectively lead conversations with middle schoolers on this topic. Additionally, a member of the Wellness Committee named Cooney, if anybody knows her, she's a co-chair at the Southern Berkshire Community Health, Southern Berkshire Health Community Coalition, and is working to bridge the work between the two groups. And additionally, they've been designing some posters to remind Monument athletes about hydration, which will be hung up in all blocks. So we also have a communications and celebrations committee. They've been planning and brainstorming for a mid-year school-wide celebration. And additionally, I've done a lot of work to improve communication and make use of the TVs that are in the school central hallway. I've noticed a huge difference. I know a lot of things about the school that I did not know before, actually, so that's great. Our academic experience committee just wrapped up a data collection project about the use of digital platforms throughout the school, and so the data has been sent up to higher levels in the hopes of informing a more unified switch. And they're now looking to tackle the honors designation program in the school, which is something that's been needing some help for, I would say, a couple of years now. It's been really hard to make progress with this in the past due to a disconnect with administration, which is actually no longer an issue. The committee had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Barnes to discuss moving forward with the program. The top issues with the program that the committee is looking to tackle is consistency within the program, rigor within the program, and most notably equity within the program. And then, speaking of equity, our last subcommittee is the DEI subcommittee. It's composed, the DEI subcommittee is a little bit different. It's composed of members that are already serving roles on other committees, so that way diversity, inclusion is integrated throughout all of SOB's work. So recently, this committee was also able to be with Mr. Barnes to have a discussion about vulnerable groups of students within Monument. And the committee will be, the committee will be working to support these groups as well as addressing the use of hateful and derogatory language, which is a huge issue we've been seeing mostly in the underclassman population and also in the population of rising freshmen, so the current eighth graders out to boys. The DEI subcommittee is, keeping this idea in mind, we're planning to host a sort of preventative programming to work with both the underclassmen and incoming freshmen to prevent the use of this language and diminish it from our school culture. As another good thing, we have February break coming up. It's little, but we're hoping that it will get everyone a chance to relax and, you know, take some time off before the next day of school. So our winter athletic season has also come to an end, and our winter athletics team is absolutely crushed at this season. First up in the spotlight is our boys' basketball team, who's done wonderfully this season. Most notably is the senior trio of Isaiah Keepner, Griffin McElroy, and Manny Brown. Head coach Randy Coldus describes them as the face of the program and the lifeline of the program, and says that they've worked really, really hard on the offseason to become better basketball players and represent the school in the right way. A special setup to Manny, who recently scored 1,000 points in his high school career, which is incredible. Our swimming team was able to send both boys and girls teams to the Central Western Massachusetts sectional, as well as Massachusetts States. I don't think states is happening, but for state-bound swimmers, we have Helen Thorpe and Annabelle Holmes. And on the boys' team, we have Isaac Schultz, James Tenetti, and Gregory Cal. As in addition to sending swimmers to states, we've also sent a couple of Alpine ski racers to states, so this includes Bronwyn Boyd, Declan Logan, Crystal, and At Boy Club, Sophia Kerlatti, and Gibson Stover. And they were able to place really well, with both teams finishing their season second overall. So something to look forward to is from the 24th to 20th of February, we'll be receiving a little bit of a new population of students at Monument. So every year for the past couple of years, Monument's been able to host a group of French exchange students. It's a program that's slept through our, like the French division of our foreign language program. So we are really excited to host them. Hopefully, Ariel will be next week, or next meeting with his French students, so that'll be fun. In terms of challenges, there's just been a lot of sickness going around, and it's been difficult for teachers and students to like, just working around the absences. We hope everyone is able to stay well-rested and healthy and hopefully rest up over great.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Christopher. Yeah, thanks, Mirabelle. What I'd like to do now is hear some updates from the principals, and if we could start with Cynthia and, and work our way up through the three schools, that would be great.
Christopher, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to piggyback on my, you know, Mirabelle shared, Mirabelle and Ariel shared notes with me each time. There was so much amazing stuff in there that I just, I wanted the folks to be there, and I didn't want to add too much, so I just had just a few things to add. During the winter season, it's really, very rewarding to see all the students because they're inside. I should say, the winter athletics and extracurricular season. They're all inside during the gym, during theater, moving cafeteria, and all those places, really fun to see them around, exercising and practicing. I'm really excited for all of the, what's the word I'm looking for? Not just games, but all the competition that's going to come up through the, through the Western Mass and then through states, and also in March with our Mean Girls musical. It's going to be fantastic. Thank you, Mirabelle. You did a great job. And I also wanted to say that with regard to challenges, it's obviously been the sickness, but also, you know, there's another struggle within the district, and that's, and that's the budget and the cost we have to pay to the budget, so that's been a big challenge as well, so, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, good, sorry, Steve. Go ahead. Jake, would you like to say something?
Next things up tonight.
Yeah.
Need to mix things up. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hope everybody's well. Let me get to the rain tab. I have a full page tonight. You'll be shocked to hear, so. We had a wonderful fifth and sixth grade dance last Friday night. It was really, it has been a long time since, probably the last fifth grade dance I went to, I was a fifth grader. Like early 1980s, so I did not know what to expect. It was delightful. Our students were wonderful. They had a great time. It was just like a really nice big party, and I learned a few new songs, which was interesting. And it was just a really, really nice community event. Hopefully, some of our families were able to go and grab a quick Friday night dinner. And we're very grateful to all the teachers and the paraprofessionals who came to help chaperone to the seventh and eighth graders that did an awful lot of the work to actually make the dance successful. Twenty-five of our seventh and eighth grade chorus members went up to the high school today to rehearse for the Monument Mountain Music Department cabaret, which will take place on February 26th from seven to nine. And we're really grateful to have that be a nice collaborative experience for our seventh and eighth graders and their high school counterparts. Always exciting when middle school students get to spend a little time with high school students at the high school and start building the excitement that, that they're, that's always there about going up on the hill, but this, this is a nice way to do it, so we're grateful for that. We're very thankful to our students and our families and to our teachers for a really good set of student-led conferences and student-involved conferences. We did those over the 11th and the 12th, and I got to see a few of the student-led conferences. That was a new experience for me, really impressive. Students sort of owning their own learning, talking about their own sort of aha moments as a learner this year, and the challenges and the things that excited them. And just again, a really nice job to everybody involved. Like to thank our eighth grade team and our librarian Jennifer Garen for rolling out and piloting guidelines around the use of AI for homework and for academic assignments. We are, after we get back from break, going to meet with crews, with our eighth grade crews and talk about that we are going to pilot some guidelines for, you know, how to use this as a tool, but not allow it to become a mechanism to cheat yourself through not actually learning material and processing material. And we're really excited about that. Grateful to Jennifer for her leadership role in that. Our seventh grade Shakespeare and Company residency program is starting soon, so there's a lot of buzz in the seventh grade about that. Of course, they're going to see Romeo and Juliet tomorrow at Shaking Co., which we talked about last time. And so that's really going to build some anticipation for the residency program. Our seventh grade team reports real delight that their students are showing a marked uptick in buy-in and in perseverance as we hit mid-year. I don't know if you're seeing that at home, but they, they are seeing it at school, and, and it's good. You know, the kids are, it's easy to hit sort of a midway doldrum. I think our kids are hitting a midway uptick in their trajectory. We're very proud of them for that. Again, thanks to our librarian Jennifer. Our Black History Month Film Festival has been a real success. We had a lot of the students going in over lunch and recess this week to see the movie Race, which is the Jesse Owens story. It's an excellent movie if you haven't seen it. And when we get back from break, going to be showing the film Harriet, which is of course about Harriet Tubman. And so that happens at lunch and recess for our seventh and eighth graders, and a lot of kids take advantage of it, and we're really grateful to them for doing that. And finally, you know, under good news, yet another morning of getting to school and having the parking lot be clear and having the sidewalks be clear so that our students and our staff can get into the building safely. And that does not happen by magic. It happens because our custodial teams and the district maintenance team get early starts and work really hard to make that happen. And this is, you know, some winters, I suspect, maybe once or twice, they're really having to hit it. This winter, it just seems like several times a week, and we're really grateful for that because if they're not doing what they're doing at five in the morning and six in the morning, then we're not starting school safely at 7:30 or eight o'clock in the morning, so we're really grateful to them. No shortage of challenges. Attendance, once again, top of our list and top of our challenges. Illnesses this year are really something. I remember when I was superintendent, Lee, talking with the school committee about getting rid of February break. And a local physician, Tom Consalati, happened to be on the school committee and just made the comment that on, on their best day ever, schools are kind of Petri dishes. But by the middle of February, they are super gross, sticky Petri dishes. And we need that week to get away from one another, to sanitize the buildings, and this year I can really see that we need it. I think everybody in our school has really great concern and grave concerns over the implications around the budget that you're going to be talking about tonight. Some of it's related to programs. We are looking at a, at a loss potentially of our design program, which is a really powerful piece. There's a lot of stuff that gets covered in that program. And it makes use of our really remarkable maker space, which I know all of you have seen and you're familiar with. There's concerns over class sizes and just the overall breadth and depth of what we're able to offer our fifth through eighth graders. Understanding that money does not grow on trees and we're, and it's a giant balancing act, but they do need to say on behalf of the staff that we're all really concerned about that. And that this is one, again, I try to always have some challenge that I am the author of, and that I have the own as a leader. Student-led conferences were wonderful this year. They didn't have it until mid, mid-February, and that was a little bit late. And we didn't let our families know until really probably mid to late January, and again, that, that was a, that was on me for, for just not wrapping my head around it and getting it scheduled. So in spite of that, we had great attendance. I hope anybody that's listening to this or hearing this tonight understands that if you weren't able to make a conference during the two days, your children's teachers are happy to do that. Ellie Rizzo and I, our assistant principal, are happy to host student-led conferences for families, but I'm going to learn from that and we'll do better next year. So that is our good news and our challenges.
Thanks. Great pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. So Cynthia?
Hi there. Happy Thursday. So I'm going to keep it short, unlike the gentleman before me. Since we last saw you, the hundredth day of school has passed, which in elementary school, I'm sure all of you remember, is a big deal. Some of the teachers dress as if they were 100 years old, and then the, what they do now in our school is our kindergartners bring in their accounting collection of 100 objects. And they get displayed in the hallway where we do indoor dismissal when it's freezing cold. So everybody got a chance to see these collections. It is everything from 100 M&Ms to 100 pennies to 100 Legos. It's super fun. So that was really great. Our third grade had families into trying to design a marble run where the, they had certain materials they had to use to make a marble run with three distinct turns in it, and then the marble had to land in a cup. And so that was, that was fun. Yesterday was a half-day, and we had a really great professional development from a Dr. Larry, Dr. Sean Larry Stevens. And that was around inclusion and building inclusive classrooms and fostering inclusion for all students. It was wonderful. And then after that, we had a panorama training. Panorama is our student information platform. And it's relatively new to the district, and so we had a training on panorama, which was wonderful for myself. And then tomorrow, our third grade is putting on an assembly. We typically have one assembly a month, and often a grade level will take the assembly and be the ones that are presenting. And so tomorrow, our third grade is presenting, of course, it's Valentine's Day. So on the agenda is our students, our third grade students made sound suits after Nick Cave, the artist who was featured at Mass Moka. So they used recycled materials and created these really incredible suits that they will put on for the rest of the school and dance. And the fourth graders electrified them somehow, and there's music to go with them, so that's going to be really exciting. And then we're all going to do the cupid shuffle together. They're going to teach the rest of the school the cupid shuffle. So that's it.
I just had one question. How long did the M&M collection stay at a high?
Of course, they're hot glue.
I think it's still the same question.
Great. Thanks, thanks to Bun Cynthia. So the next one's sort of a fun one. There's a local foundation, the Care Bear Foundation, and they've donated $3,261 to be split between our three schools. And I'd love if somebody would make a nice motion, both approving that donation and acknowledging their longtime support of the schools.
Peter, I'm going to recuse myself in this because I'm on the board of Care Bear, so Rich is going to take over.
Do we have a motion to grant?
So. So move.
Second. Any questions or discussions? Okay, we'll go to a roll call. Sarah Borla? Diane Singer?
Yes.
Sarah Tenetti?
Yes.
William Fields?
Yes.
William Vogt?
Yes.
Andrew Potter?
Hi.
Jason St. Peter?
Hi.
Allison Reed?
Yes.
Steve Ben is abstained, and I vote yes. It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and thanks to Care Bear for their support. Next thing I want to talk about is tied to the little memo I put in the packet. And in this one, I'd also like to request a motion to approve. We have an opportunity through DESI and the MSBA to create a fourth Chapter 74 program. Chapter 74 is the gold or platinum standard for vocational programming. And, and the current programs we have that are Chapter 74 are automotive, horticulture, and early childhood education. We explored three additional possibilities. Carpentry, plumbing, and electrical. And, and in my memo that Christopher Barnes and Ian Brown contributed to, we make an argument for that fourth program to be electricity. I think there's a great need. I think there's a good career pathway there. Electricians are well compensated. And the other thing we mentioned in the memo was that the, the two other districts that offer those program, or that offer an electricity program within Berkshire County are both at capacity, which we think is an indicator of, of demand. So I'm happy to respond to any questions, questions, and/or Christopher could as, as well. And then if, if you're open to it, I would appreciate a motion to approve the creation of a Chapter 74 program in electricity. And, and the timing of this is relatively significant because it's tied to the, the high school design project.
Bill Vogt.
Just a question about carpentry. We have an existing, what, non-Chapter 74 carpentry program?
Yeah, that, that's correct, and this is sort of one of the, the downsides of this. We think as a school, we, we really have the numbers to accommodate four programs. And from a space perspective, it's a, it's a, an either-or, but not both. So we would continue running our, our carpentry program while we work towards building a building, assuming it's, it's passed by the voters. And then likely a year before the building were to open, we would phase out our carpentry program and phase in the electricity program.
Just to be clear, though, the carpentry, that is just classed as, that's not, that's not even a pathway at this point, correct?
And.
Correct.
So an additional clarification, which I heard Sharon, is it woodworking or is it carpentry? Because there's really, there's a big difference between those.
No, no, right. So, so what, what, the, Andy, to be, to be clear, what, what we have now is woodworking. And if, if we were to, to have a Chapter 74 program, it would have been in carpentry. But the recommendation is not to do that. It's, it's to do it in electricity.
Phasing out is woodworking.
Phasing out is woodworking, yeah.
That's an important.
And I think too, you know, Peter made a good point about the space in the building and the implications on design of the new building. But, I mean, the rigor of any of these Chapters 74 programs, and particularly the electricity one, like almost makes it from a time standpoint impossible to have more. You know, I mean, there's, I mean, the beauty, the electric, you know, it takes $200 to train to just take the electrician's license, and these kids are going to fulfill those hours at this program. But it's going to be very rigorous for them to do that, and, you know, it's not, you couldn't do both programs, and even, we only have so many kids, you know what I mean? So it definitely comes at time issue.
Yeah. Is it harder to find a, an instructor for this?
That's my question.
Than there is?
We, we've wrestled with all of that, so that, that is a, that is a slight concern. The people, to do this, any one of these roles, you need practical experience as a professional, right, to, to be licensed. And then you also need certification as, as a teacher. So to find the, the right person to, to do this job will be a little challenging for a whole host of reasons, including compensation, right? If you're, if you're a highly successful electrician, you, you could financially do better being an electrician than, than teaching high school kids an electricity or electrician program. But, but there, people are at all sorts of different points in their careers at different times. And, and, and we think we'll be able to find someone. We, we take some time to recruit. So it's a, it's a concern, but I don't think it's a, it's a unsolvable barrier.
Other questions?
Yes. How popular is the woodworking program now at Monument?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a, that's a challenge too. Christopher could probably talk to, to class sizes. If he, if he, and I don't know that he has it in, in front of him right now. Kids participate in that program and like it and appreciate the teacher there. But, but what's attractive to us about the electricity program is, is the, the broader context and, and the professional opportunities there. Christopher, do you want to chime in on the, on the number of young people engaged in woodworking now?
Yeah, come on. I would agree that they enjoy the woodworking. They like the teacher. Are all the classes full? I can't say. I was going to pull it up real quick, but haven't wasn't able to quite yet. But they're taking it as a woodworking class and not as a carpentry program. You know, that's a very different experience. And obviously, we had to make a decision moving forward. We really tried to do our research on that, contact other schools, find out what their, what their waitlist was, or if there was a waitlist, or what are the most powerful programs, what are the opportunities? And this is, this was their recommendation, yeah.
Are they still using the computer-aided cutting tool? Didn't they?
They have, that's in.
Engineering.
Advanced engineering.
Oh, okay, all right.
You should check that out.
But they, we have several. Several of them for different purposes, you know, whether it's foam or wood, or whether it's metal, right, that kind of thing. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's another very alternative. Other questions?
Is, is there a way to make woodworking some other activity at the school? Like an after-school activity or some kind of thing that is in a pathway somewhere or not at class, but also, so kids who, when I visited the school, I saw the carpentry and the woodworking area, and it was well-used and a lot of equipment there.
A lot of.
Yes, so.
Peter, did you hear that question?
I, I did, yeah. I mean, I, I think, I, I think that's something we, we can explore over time. I, I struggle, like, one of the greatest strengths of the high school is we try to be everything. I struggle, like, one of the greatest strengths of the high school is we try to be everything to everybody. And one of our challenges is we try to be everything to everybody, right? So at a certain point, and we've not just seen this in academic offerings, but we've seen it in even athletic offerings in particular seasons, when there's so many choices that we may actually erode participation in other ones. I think that's a conversation we can keep having. But it may make more sense to have that conversation later in the meeting tonight when we talk about budget and balancing competing opportunities.
Anyone else?
I was just going to comment on the other two programs. We're looking at a new building, a new high school. And what comes up in regards to the building committee was we're looking at a building that is adaptable to further expansion of some programs. And it would certainly seem to me that plumbing and carpentry would be in line for expansion in regards to the facility that we're hoping will be there in a few years. Because I just had an experience with a plumber who took care of my heating. And we were talking, and he said he would like, you know, HVAC is really big. Everybody's going for HVAC. And he said the main problem is there's not a lot of people that really know what they're doing with it. He's very lucky that he has a son who is very interested in it. So I think the other two programs, I would not want to see them go by the wayside. And certainly with the new building, they could be incorporated in because we're making plans for possible future uses of the new building. So that would be my input into those.
So downstream.
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 Got to start somewhere.
I am willing to make a motion to accept the creation of Chapter 74 program in electricity.
So I have a motion by Andy, seconded by Bill. Other discussion? Hearing non, a roll call. Sarah Tenetti.
Yes.
Allison Reed.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Bill Vogt.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Borla.
Hi.
Rich.
Yes.
And I, it's you Dan on this here.
Okay, thank you very much on that. The next one's just a quick verbal update, and I'm not going to share images yet. But we were talking about both our branding work and our website work. And initially, I shared a very ambitious timeline. We've made some real progress with the branding work and working with our local design group, Munji. We've got some preliminary designs that we'll share in the near future. And we're excited about it in terms of updating our brand and logo. And then that's going to inform the website design. But I sort of wanted to tell you that we've had some success on the branding. Because it's taken a little longer, it's delayed our website work a little bit. But as we wrap up the branding work, I think we can accelerate our website work. And, well, initially, I hope we might have had something around this time of year. I think it's more likely it'll be May or June, and I just wanted to share that update.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing, and in a sec, I'm going to share a screen, is why I think many people are in this meeting. So first of all, I appreciate the number of people that are online. It looks to me like there are 52 people. Steve, did you want me to stop for a sec, or Rich, before I go on?
So I just have a couple of comments to make before we start, so everyone understands the process. No different process than other years, but I think there's some new people involved, which is terrific. So tonight's school committee meeting includes a budget presentation, which we're about to hear, by the administration to the school committee. This is a first chance for the school committee to hear about the proposed FY26 budget. The end of the presentation, the school committee will have a chance to ask questions. School committee will not deliberate this evening. Because this is the school committee's first look at the budget, there will be no public comment at the end of the presentation. Of course, we welcome public comment at the end of the meeting, which won't be too far after, during Citizen Speak. The official time for public comment is during the public hearing, which is two weeks from tonight, February 27, 6:00 PM at the middle school. And I urge anyone who wants to speak then also to speak then. I really urge you tonight to listen to the budget presentation this evening and look at the materials that are online and form your own opinion. There's been misleading and incorrect information presented by people who really should know better. And we need to move ahead and make a positive out of this. The school committee vote on the budget could happen as early as February 27, but no later than March 20. We really appreciate everyone coming this evening. There's 47 people online. There's a handful of people in the room. And we want to thank you for being here, and we will listen to you. And remember, the 27th will be at the middle school as well as virtual. Now, Peter, you can go ahead.
Okay, yes, sorry. I got on a roll, and I'm looking at multiple screens as I'm talking, which is a little challenging. So in a minute, I'm going to share some slides, and Sharon and I are going to talk through those slides. But once I put slides up, people get really fixated, for better or worse, on the slides. So I did want to share a few things verbally first. And some of this reiterates what Steve shared in his own introduction. So this year, for the first time in a significant way, I think we're facing really significant budget challenges. And some of those challenges are compounded a bit by inaccurate information, rumors, incorrect inferences, and so on. What I hope I can do tonight is to try to clear that up and share the context for what we're facing and how we hope to move forward. The impact of health insurance, salaries, utilities, transportation, special education tuition, and special education transportation are significant. The last time we saw something on this scale was, I think, the 2009, 2010 year, which happened to be my first year in the district. And it's important to know that almost every city, town, and regional district in Massachusetts is facing something similar to us. And some of the close ones that we see as part of our peer group are Amherst, Belchertown, Housick Valley, which is in Berkshire County, South Hadley, and North Hampton. Some of my presentation, when I share the slides, will be a little repetitive. But I think it's okay to share a couple of these notions, two or even three times. As we framed our budget, Sharon and I, and the principals, and Kate, and Colin, and Steve, and Uli, I mean, a whole range of people, tried to make reductions that would keep the greatest impact away from students. And we're trying to balance our needs and our students' needs with the community's capacity to support our work. As I mentioned, we've been meeting and working on this for months. And what I'm going to present, and Sharon's going to present, is our best thinking at this time. All that being said, we acknowledge the significant impact on affected staff, as well as the impact on students, and sort of a broader impact on staff and community morale as a whole. Something that was early reported was that we were eliminating an EK class. Importantly, we're not eliminating an EK class. That was something that we had explored as an early possibility, but we're not recommending doing that now. I'm going to talk once about it, and then I'll talk that again when I have the slides. At the elementary school, our recommendation is to reduce one position by eliminating one of our four sections of third-grade classes. It's our understanding that there's 61 kids in the current second grade. So those students would be seen in two sections of 20 students and one of 21. And if we had four sections, it would be four sections of 15 and one of 16. We're also recommending eliminating the unfilled directed study position and a number of stipends at the elementary school. At the middle school, we're recommending eliminating two positions, the design position and the math position. And at the high school, we're recommending, and this gets a little confusing because some of the positions are attached to the high school, and some of them are seen as district positions. But two positions connected to retirements, not filling those positions, eliminating one PE position and a halftime French position. And then at the district level, eliminating one of the two educational team leads and our out-of-school-time director. Plus, across-the-board reductions in stipends. So what I'd like to do now is share the slides, and I'll do the first part, then Sharon will come in for the middle. And then I'll conclude with the impact to town. So let me just pull that up. Hang on. I don't like the way that's showing. Yeah, sorry. Hang on just a sec. This will be better. Okay. Can everybody see that clearly? No? Okay, thanks. So this is our fiscal '26 budget. So when we talk about the budget, we really like to start with our mission statement. And I just want to, sorry, I just want to minimize this other window. So to ensure that all students are challenged through a wide range of experiences to become engaged, curious learners, and problem solvers who effectively communicate, respect diversity, and improve themselves and their community. Our budget priorities were to continue to provide high-quality education for all students, continue to provide a range of social-emotional supports, and ensure equitable access for all students. I mentioned these at the elementary school, so reduce the three, reduce the third grade to three sections from four, reduce stipends. And then on the other side, purchase and implement a new ELA, English Language Arts curriculum. At the middle school, a math teacher, a design teacher, and reduce stipends. At the high school, one of the retirements is an English position, so going from seven English teachers to six. Reduce a computer instruction teacher, that's another retirement, and redistribute some of those classes to other folks in the building. Reduce one of our two phys ed teachers, but acknowledge that a year ago, we had a health teacher. So we're sort of going back to what we had before. Only, in this proposed approach, it would be one full-time health teacher and one full-time phys ed teacher. And reduce world language by half of a full-time equivalent. At the district-wide level, eliminate the out-of-school-time or 21st-century community learning coordinator-director position and reassign those responsibilities, and reduce one of the educational team leads. Here's some of the things that are impacting our budget. So an 11% total increase for active health plans for this coming year in the amount of $372,423. The Berkshire Health Group medical plan rates are set at a 16% increase. There's no premium holiday expected or approved this year, and a slight change in dental rates. The MedX rate changes 19% in 2025 and 12% in 2026, but a combined increase of 23.28%. And then our contributions to the Berkshire County retirement system, which is for our non-certified employees, is actually going down a little bit, 1.65. Educational services and tuition, so these are added district placements for students with IEPs, is an increase of 44.22% or $633,500. And associated transportation is an increase of 15.6% or $460,751. Technology, we're able to see a decrease of 15.05% or $28,900. And that's largely that we were able to purchase devices through grants. And facilities and operations is an increase of 37.56% or $165,050. And we can go into this in some more detail, and Steve can share some of the embedded costs there. Utilities, as we all know, are going up, 6.36% or $500, or, sorry, $56,210. In educational supplies, materials, and equipment, we're seeing a really large increase of 74.17%, which ends up being $74,100 around new ELA curriculum in the elementary school. And professional development, a slight increase of 2.91% or $2,000. And that's mostly covered by grants. Other insurances, and Sharon can talk a little bit to this, are an increase of 9.95% or 95.02. Co-curricular and athletics, an increase of 42.86% or $15,000. And that in part is tied to rising costs, but also our student athlete success and postseason. and, and postseason and playoff costs. And then other administrative costs are a decrease of sixteen point seven-three percent or forty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. What I'd like to do now is have Sharon talk. And Sharon, when I'm clicking the slides, I can't see you. So if you could just verbally say, next slide, that would be helpful.
Next slide.
Thanks.
So our operating budget, the expenditures for FY twenty-six, twenty-six, thirty-seven million, four-hundred-and-fifty-four, eight-hundred-and-ten gross operating budget, that's an increase of two-million-four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-fifty-two dollars or six-point-eight-nine percent. And that is after all those changes that Peter had already talked about. So if we look at by category where most of these, these changes are in salaries, the category itself of all salaries is increasing just one point three-seven, but it's sixteen point nine-six percent of the total change or two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-eight-forty-eight. Benefits is the largest, has the largest portion of the total change. The category itself, as Peter said, is changing at eleven point eight-eight percent, but it makes up fifty-six point six-five percent of that two forty, two-million-four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand change of eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-seven-ninety-one. Transportation is up fifteen point six percent or thirty-one point five-three, four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-seven-fifty-one. That's due for this, to the CPI change and then also the increase in cost of outplacement transportation. Next slide, please. Technology, as Peter said, is decreasing fifteen point oh-five. It's a decrease in the total change also, one point nine-eight percent or the twenty-eight thousand nine hundred. Education services and tuition is up forty-four point two-two percent. That's the second-largest total, part of the total change at forty-three point three-five, six-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-five-hundred. That is our students that go out of district, but it's also other services that include translations. We've had a lot of need for translation changes. Our BSL lines have gone up, so all of that is in the educational services and tuition. Supplies and materials has gone up seventy-four point seventeen percent. It's just five percent of the change, seventy-four thousand one hundred. Seventy thousand is the new curriculum. And we're hoping at some point, we can change some of that to a grant, but we wouldn't know until next year, so we'd have to budget for that. Activities and athletics, the category changes forty-two. Slide.
Yep, you did.
Yep, you did it. You can just do that, forty-two point eight-six. And it's only one point oh-three percent of the change for fifteen thousand. Utilities is six point three-six for the category. That's three point eight-five percent of the total change or fifty-six thousand two-ten. And then, as Peter said, facilities and operations changes at thirty-seven point five-six percent. It's eleven percent of the change at one sixty-five oh-five oh. Without a change, slide. We thought it was important to show where the changes are, that some categories sound like they're changing a lot, but as a percentage of the total change, it's a small. The other admin costs decreased at sixteen point seven-three. So again, it's a decrease of the total change of forty-seven thousand eight hundred. The other insurance, that's our general liability insurance. And that, you know, that's just the liability, the, the costs go up every year, nine point nine-five percent. It's the smallest positive amount of the change at point six-five or nine thousand five. And professional development category change in two point nine-one. That should be a point oh-seven, not a negative point seven, two thousand dollars. But the other way we look at the budget is where, where do we spend the money? Not just in category, but when we look at by department. So next, Peter. The elementary school is just under twenty percent of that total budget. The middle school's just under sixteen and the high schools just above twenty-six. Then we look at student services, which is what we looked at before with the educational services and tuition. It's twelve point four-six. So it's important to know that almost seventy-five percent of our budget does go to the schools. And then, next, Peter. District-wide all other, that includes non-public transportation. By case law, actually, when there is a private school in your district, you are responsible, the, the district is responsible for the transportation of those students. Plus, the retiree health insurance, our contingency and school choice is the district-wide all other. That's twelve point six-eight. Regular transportation is in point nine-two of the budget. School committee and all other administration is three point seven-nine. Technology and food service, that includes the food service director and we have that big budget for any deficit in the revolving fund. That's two point eight-one percent. And then facilities and maintenance is two point six-three percent of the budget. Next slide. That just shows what we just talked about in a pie chart. So we visually can see that salary benefits, as we discuss every year, because we are service industry, is seventy-four percent of our budget. And then transportation is the next largest. So the majority of our budget goes to contracts, either legal contracts such as transportation or services and personnel contracts. So just to look at this next slide. Again, the expenditures we talked about, the gross operating budget is up two point four million or six point eight-nine. The net operating budget, I know this looks strange, but it's because of the way, what else we had in there. The net operating budget is the difference between the gross operating budget less school choice and tuition in. And the difference between the two is a hundred thousand for an additional amount from school choice. And next slide. Next slide is what I just explained. Capital budget. We are only planning this year. This was one of the first things, I want, I want to step back for a minute. When we look at the, the assessments and the total budget, we look at the capital budget as well. And, and we have for the past couple of years been putting money into our stabilization fund. And in FY twenty-five, it's budgeted to have five hundred thousand go into that. However, when we were looking at the FY twenty-six budget and realized that there would need to be some reductions, this was the first place we went because it was the farthest from students. So we reduced the, the capital budget from our original projection of five hundred, five-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-seven-fifty down to the thirty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty, I should say capital, I apologize, thirty-three-thousand-seven-fifty. And that is to pay the interest on the borrowing for the feasibility and schematic design study. Next slide, Peter. And then we look at where we get our revenue from. The first things we look at is how much of our, of our budget is covered by the minimum local contribution? And that's thirty-three percent. The minimum local contribution, we use from the governor's house budget. The House Two, House Three, they keep changing number. And then above that, what do the towns need to spend to support the budget that we're proposing covers forty-seven percent of the cost. Chapter seventy, which is the educational money we get from the state, is nine percent. Chapter seventy.
Is the thirty-three percent inclusive of the forty-seven or on top?
It's in addition, it's together. Yeah, so it's, you know, eight percent. Chapter seventy-one, on the shoulder to the right, you know, I'm gonna show the person's okay, is at two percent. That's the reimbursement we get for our transportation. Above that is E and D that we're using, it's two percent. Our choice tuition, choice and tuition in is six percent. And all other revenue is one percent, and that's our Medicaid interest miscellaneous. Next slide. The excess and deficiency, we're using, we were certified at six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars for one point nine-nine percent of this year's budget. You can keep up to five percent of your subsequent year's budget. We have one point nine-nine percent. Six-hundred-and-seventeen or eighty-eight point six-five percent of the balance is being used to offset the FY twenty-six operating budget. Back to you, Peter. Next slide.
Yeah, so let's sort of see what, what the impact of all of this on the town is. And I think before I click on the assessment slides, and maybe in hindsight, I should have shared this at the beginning. If, if we had done a, a level program budget, like kept everything as it was, kept every single person and budget line, and then, and then built in the, the costs for all those increases, our, our total increase would have been around twelve percent. We got to the, the mid-sixes and you'll see the impact on the towns with, with our reductions. There are people in this call from the various town select boards and finance committees, and everybody has a different threshold for how much is, is too much or, or too little. So keep that in mind as, as I share these, these next few slides and, and talk about the impact on, on the towns. So when, when the town's share of their assessment is determined, it, it's really connected to three things. The population allocation, so the number of, of students in, in the given town, the minimum local contribution and the net assessment. You'll look at these two sets of columns next to each other, fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six. And, and you'll see two things, or maybe three, four things that, that are changing. In, 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 the difference between those years is all the towns had slightly fewer students. But, but then when we calculate the percentages in each of the towns, Great Barrington's and Stockbridge's percentages go up and West Stockbridge's percentage goes down. And, and you'll see the impact of that in, in the subsequent slides. So this is just a little primer on minimum local contribution. So shall annually appropriate an amount equal to not less than the sum of the minimum required local contribution? And the district may choose to spend additional amounts charged to members according to the district's retired, required agreement. So the minimum local contribution went up in Great Barrington and Stockbridge and, and it went down slightly in West Stockbridge. And, and the net assessments went up in Great Barrington and Stockbridge. And again, it went down slightly in, in West Stockbridge. So the total assessment change is five point three-eight percent or one million, five-hundred-and-thirty-seven, a hundred and two dollars. And, and in Great Barrington, the increase is six point four-four percent or one million, three-hundred-and-fifty-six and twenty-one dollars. In Stockbridge, it's six point six-two percent or two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. And, and in West Stockbridge, it's going down by a negative two point zero-five percent or seventy-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. There is some fluctuation in what happens with enrollment. And, and at a future meeting, we, we can share like a five or ten-year running average on that. So, so this year, West Stockbridge is seeing a decrease. In previous years, with little bumps in enrollment, Stock, or West Stockbridge has seen an increase, but, but they tend to average out. And, and we even considered at one point or did an analysis on if we should do a, a five-year rolling average and we determined that, that it wasn't warranted. But, but I think it is important to look at, at the impact and the increases in each town over five, ten or even fifteen years. So now we get to the point where there are questions. So I'll stop sharing the slides so, so I can see the, the school committee members as they have questions about this.
Any questions?
The middle school design position, how many design teachers are there in the middle school now?
One. Yeah.
So that's the type of, again, I have been there, seen that around, spoke to that teacher. We went through this a number of years ago, too. And looking at the elimination of that, that's when I went to talk to the teacher. And what I saw there was incredible. Not only the machinery, but the amount of students that were taking advantage of that program was incredible. I talked to the teacher at eleven and I am, I am not in favor of getting rid of that program.
For Dr. Wilber, I know we just answered the question. I get your point.
I just want to make that.
Yeah, no, right, and it, it's clear as day. I, I get that, too. We spent a lot of time thinking about this. And, and a, a question for the school committee is what's our, our, what's our overall goal? And, and then what are we willing or not willing to do to meet the goal, right? It, it doesn't make me happy that I'm proposing a budget where we're effectively eliminating eight and a half positions. But, but if, if we don't do that, then we might be going to the towns with a twelve percent increase. And I don't know that that's, that that's tenable or acceptable either. We, we, we went through over months a range of possibilities and, and that's where we landed. And, and it's, it's something that's, that's worth us talking about and trying to make sense of. Other comments from the school committee or questions?
There's my question. How many math teachers at the middle school do we have now?
It, it's, it's a, Jake, would, would you be willing to speak to it? It's a little hard for me to explain because in, in some grades, people are teaching both math and science.
Sure, I'd be happy to. We have, we have an eighth grade math teacher, a seventh grade math teacher, a sixth grade math teacher, fifth grade has two different people teaching mathematics, the way fifth grade is currently structured. And then we have special education support that steps into several co-op math classes. So we, we, we feel like that's an area where strategically it makes sense and where we can get the classes covered without too much of a class size increase. But, but it's, yeah, on the surface, neither of these helps make sense. But I could, there's fifty other scenarios, but you look at them, all make any other sense either.
Okay, yes. And the other question I had, when Sharon went to transportation and translation increases, do the transportation, we get reimbursed through chapter seventy-one?
On the regular education transportation.
So we get zero?
On the, on the special, on the special ed transportation, if the student is a high-cost student and we can claim If the student is a high-cost student and we can claim them on our circuit breaker, we do get reimbursed, partial reimbursement on that transportation.
What is partially like thirty percent seventy or fifty, or is it very?
It's that is that seventy-five now? Okay, so it's seventy-five percent.
Okay, and then for the translation increase, do we get any um reimbursement from either the state or the federal government for that, or is that all out of our pocket?
Well, Sharon, we we do we do a little bit, right? There was that supplemental um uh funds we got that the in the like ten to fifteen thousand dollar range.
Well, we're not budgeting any, and we're not budgeting any for twenty-six. We can't.
We can't because we don't know what we're gonna get.
Yeah. So there's no money in any state or federal government earmarked for us to get reimbursement this next school year, so okay.
I could, that leads to a a question in terms of the Medicaid and and any other federal funds we have. Are we looking at the risks that are fairly apparent uh at this at this point of losing that money and having to cover it through?
Well, because of the way it it would have to stop immediately, which is not on on the because it's a reimbursement on what we're spending already this year. So we should we shouldn't be okay next year. Um.
Your question. What what do we use the Medicaid for? I mean, we're, I mean.
We use it to reduce the budget. So just like we use the school choice chapter seventy, we use it to reduce.
But it comes down for what purpose? Why why is Medicaid?
It's for services that mostly services for kids who are on on an I P that are Medicaid eligible.
Okay.
And so we get to claim services.
Basically, Billy, Medicaid for the services that we're providing as a district.
But the entire grant, sir, a lot bigger number than that. I mean, you've got to get into the scary stuff.
Right.
I do want to get in. That's why I raised the question.
Yeah.
The problem with getting into the scary stuff is it's so much money. There's no way we could run a district, at least balance a budget for next year, taking all the money away.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we could, we'd have, if we took, we don't have the the largest one. One of our largest grants is our special education to forty grand, which is about four ninety-four this year, I think. Something like that. Um, and we don't budget it. We you, we budget outside, but then again, I think we we have in there for special education services that are not necessarily students out of district, three hundred thousands, we'd have to put that in, and then where do we cut? So um, if we don't put it that against the budget. The Medicaid, the only thing we would be taking out if we were concerned about the federal money would be a hundred thousand dollars of the Medicaid that's in there.
Who else with questions?
Is there a way to know if the ELA curriculum will be covered by a grant? Has it been in the past?
No. There there's no way to know now, and it hasn't been covered in the past. It's, this is a brand new curriculum, so um, I can't say it's been covered in the past because it's a brand new one.
The the one thing I would say about that is the administration has been incredibly impressive with using E and D at this deficiency to fund this year's budget, like more than ever in the past, like ever, ever, ever. And if we end up getting grant funding next year for this, it'll go and then drop the E and D the following year presumably, so like the way to hedge it is maybe you'll get some grants back is to use this year's E and D money and like they're doing that, so.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and and we've had, we've had a high level of success writing grants, but the 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 federal climate gets increasingly more and more complicated. Um, um, and and there's the possibility private philanthropies may pick up some of that slack, so so we'll keep writing those grants, too.
Other questions?
Um, I'm not sure if this is a budget question or not, but for people who are not used to the budget process, I'll ask it, and Sharon and Peter can address it. Um, and I'm representing Great Barrington. Our enrollment went down. And usually when enrollment goes down, assessments go down. Could you explain why our enrollment's down by twenty-five and yet our assessments are up? That might have to be explained later on down the budget process road, but maybe it would be good to get that out there now in order to deal with what, as you said, Peter, at the beginning, might be misperceptions and erroneous.
Yeah, I mean, I I can talk to it. Sharon can talk to it, too. It it's the first few slides we shared, uh, which is where there were where there were increases, right? So salary utilities, health insurance, uh, um, student services, right? Like, uh, uh, kids with a a wide range of of learning needs and and transportation uh there. Um, um, the the other thing is uh our our enrollment um uh go goes up and down, right? The the this past year's senior class was it was a particularly large uh class. Uh, and and when a class like that graduates, uh, it 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 takes a little while to to reach reach a a balance again, so I don't it it on the surface, it seems unusual that our enrollment's going down, but our costs are going up. But there are all these things that that we talked about initially that that are driving our costs up.
Also, the the population allocation. The population has gone down in all three towns, so then when you do a percentage allocation, it hasn't changed significantly. It actually has gone up slightly because of that percentage allocation.
Other questions?
In terms of class size for the elementary school, um, if a few more third graders were to enroll, how would we determine when we would need to add back a fourth class?
Yeah, so we i i in the teacher's contract, and this is a little unusual, we have guidelines. Uh, and and in the younger grades, the the class size is smaller, and and in the upper elementary grades, the the class size is larger. Uh, the example, um, a- as it stands now for next year's third grade would be uh, we likely wouldn't accept many, if any, choice students going into next year's third grade class. Um, but if if three kids moved into Great Barrington who happened to be, or families, right, with with triplets who happened to be third graders. Um, we might go from what I'm projecting is twenty, twenty, and twenty-one to twenty-one, twenty-one, and twenty-two. If if six kids moved in, then then we might create another class.
Peter, um, pardon me, some somebody reminded me today that prior to COVID, we did have some larger classes, and then, you know, after COVID, we needed to keep kids separate, and then we also wanted to keep our class size down. So and then we talked about PK and two is really critical to keep them smaller, but the third and fourth, we may go back to larger classes as we had in the past.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think that's fair, right? So so the th- that's why we came around and changed our own internal thinking around the the eliminating an E K class and 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 ultimately choosing uh not to do that because um uh there there's a general belief that that investing in smaller class size, particularly smaller class size in the earliest grades is is really impactful. And then and then there there's a big debate around what small is, right? So is is twenty for a third grade class still small? In many contexts, it's very small, but if we've been used to having classes of fifteen, twenty doesn't seem um, um, so so small.
That the scenario that happened once, remember, Marius principal?
Mm-hmm.
We budgeted to one of them, and we had to.
You had it back.
Yeah. This is, yeah, Bill, you were on that.
Yeah.
It's not easy, but we got it.
We did it in June.
The kids that are right, they sign the school, they come from the house.
Well, and then we had that the other moment when we we sort of had the self-inflicted school choice thing, and we backed off of school choice and 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 that bit us a little bit, and then and then a year or two later, we um, we adjusted our thinking there.
Hey, first, I hope we close school choice completely for third grade um at this point.
Yeah.
Going forward, unless we have anything new. Um, and this is the first time I looked at it, and I forgot for the district-wide. Did you say it was instructional coach that were the one limiting? Was that?
No, 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 but but not not that one. Um, the uh educational team lead, uh, is Kate in the room? I just can't see her.
Yeah, the educational team lead, two of them, they're the people who run all of our meetings and set up all of our special education meetings. So there's one that's pre-K to six right now, and one is seven through twelve.
We're eliminating one of those.
We're eliminating one of those.
And and that's another like sort of tough choice because uh, we created those roles with with a with intentionality and and a purpose in in mind. Um, but but when when you're confronted with uh having to figure out a way to make reductions, um, maybe redistributing some of that work to to classroom teachers makes sense, or that's what we're we're proposing.
Okay, Peter, let's move on.
Okay, I mean, I think there's only one other thing that that I wanted to share. So I I mentioned in my opening remarks, this this sort of h- how this is impactful in in terms of school morale, but also individual people. One of the things that's that's complicated, and thankfully, we haven't experienced this much, is um, i- if we eliminate a position, the person in that position may hold multiple licenses and or bumping rights. So it may make sense to eliminate a position, but but the impact of eliminating that position may ripple in in other ways. Uh, so I just wanted to flag that, so uh so people are aware of that. Um, um, and and that's something we we continue to work on.
Thank you. Anything else on the, you know, under super damage?
Yeah, just, yeah, one thing that I'd like to share. So at 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 our last meeting, um, towards the end of the meeting, I I was asked a question about the standing item on on D E I. Uh, and and though we had talked about some of it at the beginning of the meeting, uh, uh, my response uh wasn't as detailed as it as it should have been. Uh, so I want to share a little bit of an update and actually ask the principals. Um, and and this will continue to be a a practice at each meeting uh to share s- some additional updates around D E I work in in their schools. Um, so most of the people on the call received these emails from me, but but for people who are listening, um, here's some additional things that that have been happening at the district level. Um, I shared a broad statement uh on the importance of educating all students with the school community. Uh, and then subsequently shared the Attorney General's guidance on ICE uh and and um the Commissioner's guidance on L G B T Q I A plus students uh in in response to to the recent string uh of executive orders. Um, the the Tuesday, I think it was the Tuesday, maybe it was the Monday, uh, after our last school committee meeting, we met with the Capay Group, uh, which is the uh, uh, Spanish-speaking parent group. Uh, so I met with them and the three principals and a few community organizations uh to respond to their pressing and detailed questions, and there were about thirty of them uh around ways to find support for new arrivals. Uh, we heard their stories, their shared level of anxiety, their concerns. Um, and and we continued our commitment to working to support all students and families uh and and to meeting regularly going forward. Um, we continue to share information and train administrators, front office folks and and other staff on responses to potential ICE visits. Uh, we had a meeting with the Great Barrington Police Department on safety, and they asked us to remind the community um that they have a trust policy in effect. And they won't work with ICE except in the case of a criminal warrant. Um, and and you can see the the link to the trust policy on on the Great Barrington Police Department's website. Um, we did some sort of back office work on updating our internal reporting systems. Uh, so if we're asked to share information in the context of an appropriate warrant, uh, we would just share the the most basic directory information. Uh, and and that's important because previously we didn't have the capacity to to uh automatically present the simplest information. Um, and and we're sadly in in really regular communication with our uh attorneys on on planning. Um, the last piece of this is, and I shared some updates on our work with the Department of Justice in the Spirit Retreat. Um, and and that's a little bit on hold, and and when Jake talks a little bit about he what he's doing, uh, he may share a a brief update on that. Um, so th- that's a more detailed uh update on what's going on with uh with uh D E I B. Uh, and and uh we're committed and invested in that work, and and we'll make sure we share uh a additional updates regularly. Um, again, it's hard because I can't see the folks, but um that maybe this time can can we start with uh Cynthia, you you mentioned in in passing in in your remarks about the training you did the other day. Is there anything else you want to add?
Uh, no, that's that's the work that um that's the work that we did that this last week. Um, and there will be follow-up and next steps with um Dr. Stevens. He will, um, he's gonna work with me on making sure that the work that we do is followed up with.
Okay, great. Thank thank you. Uh, Jake, do you have anything else you want to add additionally?
Uh, yeah, just very briefly. Um, you know, we were very excited, oh, excuse me, we were very excited to bring the spirit program to DuBois. The spirit program is a uh is a very specific and specialized program that comes through the United States Department of Justice. Um, we are unsure of the status of that program at this point. Um, we have a group of students that we took about thirty-five students uh for our day-long retreat with these folks. Uh, we we built over the course of that day, a group of kids that were going to be called the Spirit Council, who would sort of be an advisory group that were going to work with Peter and I on um issues around belonging and around making sure that every student, every family knew that they were welcome in DuBois, and that we were not just saying that, but we were showing that. Um, not knowing where we go next, we're going to kind of um retitle what that council is going to be, but keep the keep the council together and move forward there without our report back. Um, because we don't know when or if we will even be getting that. Uh, you know, and that's on top of 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 the the other work that we do with Railroad Street Youth Project and with lots of partners from the community to just try to to create a a more warm and welcoming place for everybody, no matter who they are, where they're from, or what their life situation is. So, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Uh, and and Christopher, do you have anything to add additionally? Again, you you talked up at the at the top of the meeting about some of the great work that's happening with uh with SAB, and it's embedded in each of the other committees.
Yeah, I I didn't come prepared to talk about, but you know, the work is uh the work that we do, so I I am familiar with it. We have, um, obviously, the SAB, um, D E I B SAB Committee, I met with them recently. Um, Mirel explains some of the work they're engaged in. Um, today we had a No Your Rights um presentation by somebody whose name I can't remember, and uh, but it was also really led by Perry, I can carry a burger. And, um, you know, you know, sharing with our um uh Spanish speaking students last Last week, I think it was last week, we, um, also invited in, um, crew parts Escobar, our Spanish speaking families. And, um, you know, shared, uh, our school response and how, you know, support our students, keep them safe. You know, and, um, we are also, I am also working with the school council, um, on all these things. My, if you remember way back when we presented our school improvement plans, I asked the, um, school committee for the latitude to work, continue to work on the school improvement plan. And we've been, I've been working with the school council since then on our fourth goal, which is around, um, DEIB work. And, um, we're slowly getting things into, into place. One of those things is a survey for students on, um, you know, how they feel in school, how they feel about, you know, their sense of belonging in school. Another one is, you know, they're, they're, I'm the conduit for communication between, um, their support for the SAB, uh, DEIB work and, and their work with me along the improvement plan. So we're doing that survey. I think that's everything. We did two events, raised subcommittee work for SAB. There was something on, I apologize.
That's really good. Thank, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, Steve, I believe that's it for me.
Uh, policy or subcommittee reports, policy, Jason.
Yeah, we met, uh, earlier this week, was it? Yeah, we met within, uh, within the last week. And, um, two things, one, uh, we got a technology update, um, from ULY, um, regarding, um, computer use, technology use, um, et cetera. So that, um, I'm not sure we're going to have a reading. Forgot, that's been, I've been long meetings, but I'm not sure we're going to have a reading or that's where you're prepared if it's going to be next, next meeting or whatever. But it's, it's coming down the pipe, um, some new information. We also had, um, uh, a request, but I can remember, um, on the possibility of, it was confusing, it's still confusing, so if I get this wrong, forgive me, but, if a request for a policy, if there's a person who lives in the district, choices out to another public school that offers a school play, but wants to go do our school play instead, um, is that a possibility? And, um, Peter and our lawyers did some research and found that it's not, no other school does that. Their liability, excuse me, liability issues. And, um, uh, so that was tabled until we could get some further information. I think those are the only two.
Thank you. Bill, we're in the ground.
Uh, we haven't met, but we're meeting Tuesday afternoon at five o'clock right here in this room.
So our tenants' evaluation is not met by the unslept committee?
We did not meet until last meeting, but we have a meeting scheduled, um, two weeks before the public hearing. And if anybody has things they'd like to really dig deep on before the public hearing, let me know, send me an email. I think we'll have that meeting, um, but maybe we wouldn't, I don't know. We, our work on the budget's essentially done, you know, our evaluation of it. But, um, I'll go with Peter and Sharon. The meeting's not accounted right now, it's that, if we take it off, we'll let you know. But if people have things they want to talk about before that, you know, at a random level, even stretching, just let me know, shoot me an email.
Thank you.
You're going to tell me what it is, just say, I have some stuff I want to talk about, then I'll make sure we have a meeting.
Peter, anything on the personnel report? I think there's one retirement you may want to add.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to recognize Mike Mooney. So Mike has been a longtime English teacher at the high school and, and he announced his, his retirement. And, uh, well, we'll celebrate him later on in the year. I'd, I'd like to, uh, thank him now for his, his many years of service.
Thank you, Peter. MSBA update, uh, Jason or?
Another one of our recent meetings.
This one?
You're not a more amazing Steve than I am.
Unfortunately, this one we had yesterday, I do remember that. That, I can remember 24 hours, that's about it. Got really updates from our, um, architects. This is a big week coming up, um, as I reported last week, um, for the, um, heating cooling. We're hoping to go with ground source heat pumps that will all depend on test well, that they're going to be drilling over February break to see how the water levels are and if it's something that's possible, if there's a, it's an easy go or if there's more of a complexity to it. So we'll have that information probably in a couple of weeks. That's going to be obviously a huge factor in the new school. And then we got, um, some feedback from some of the subcommittees, um, that are doing, uh, you know, a lot of great work. Community members, people on the committee who are also on the subcommittees. Spent a lot of time on the auditorium layout. The really, um, William Law Association is really taking the lead on this, uh, with the Cisco, um, Dinesco. The big factor is, you know, with all the new handicap accessible, um, codes that are in play, factors in on where to put an orchestra pit or, you know, to the front or side. The cost associated with it, but they really did a lot of, um, great work and is, uh, looking amazing. So there's a, a subcommittee on, I forget the actual name of it, but, um, that involves, um, uh, you know, the, uh, yeah. Play director, um, music teachers, uh, everyone basically involved in the, we're ours that they're going to be meeting tomorrow, I think. Yeah, tomorrow at 1:30, um, so, so we'll hopefully have some more input. But, um, that's getting a lot of play. And also, um, one of the other subcommittee, the exterior subcommittee, um, had a lot of good input on how they actually want the building to look. You know, materials, look, wood look, brick, uh, stone, um, windows, et cetera. We did find out that, um, due to the latest, uh, green energy code, you only have 22% of the building windows, which is going to, um, be a more of a challenge for the architects, um, to put enough light into the building. They're confident that they can do an acceptable job. That's going to be another hurdle, um, that wasn't in place a year ago.
22% is the maximum?
Maximum.
But, but Jason, i- i- importantly, they, they think, uh, it can still be significantly better than our current arrangements and, and, and with, uh, some storage spaces, that there are no rooms that, that will be without windows. Uh, and it's very much not the case now with our interior rooms.
Correct, correct, but it's just another challenge that, though. I mean, again, this is, it goes back to how good the community, the committee as a whole felt about picking the Nisco as an architect. Because the plans they had and what they showed us is, you know, looks amazing and it doesn't look like it's, uh, only 22% windows. It looks a lot more, but, um, as you said, Peter, what they can do with the, the different technologies. So we're really starting to get a good idea of the potential for what the building's going to look like, what the, oh, that reminds me, parking too, as far as, uh, student drop off, bus drop off, um, circulation around the building. They got a lot of good input from the, um, both police and fire, um, as far as safety concerns and wanting access around the building. So how to incorporate that into the, to the, um, the grounds themselves and also improving the, uh, drop off pickup, et cetera. So, good meeting and we're meeting again, uh, Marshall.
Any questions? Okay, moving ahead, public comment, just if you're online, just raise your hand, we'll recognize you. Just a couple of things, three minutes, state your name and address. Please don't mention any personnel name if you're talking about the budget. That's illegal. Carrie Manzalini. Just unmute yourself, there you go.
Good evening, everyone. This is Carrie Manzalini. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Muddy Brook Elementary School. And I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the third grade position being cut. I was here last February under a similar circumstances where we were debating whether or not to keep our librarian. And I want to thank you because we now have a librarian. And we're pretty happy about that. I just want to say two things. One is that, um, we were told that we were going to be having more, um, comments and more input into the budget process and we were going to be informed, um, a little more frequently. And unfortunately, I don't, I don't believe that happened because yesterday I found out our third grade teacher, uh, one of the positions was going to be cut or moved. And I, I just want to speak to that for a minute. I think that we need to aspire, uh, to keep all of our teachers, all of our teacher positions and look at the materials that we're purchasing. I'm told that, um, the reading, um, there's thousands of dollars being spent on a new reading program. And I think that we could, uh, go without that for a few more years and save our teacher. I've been teaching 29 years. I do not believe that Muddy Brook needs a new reading program. I think that Muddy Brook does need some professional development so we can all stay on the same page. And I'm for that, but, um, over the past few years that I've been there, we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars on reading materials. And we are really good with that. And so I just want you to consider, uh, maybe that position when you're thinking about your cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's someone in the, there, go right ahead.
Everybody, um, I'm Susan Jordan, I'm a Spanish teacher at DuBois. I, uh, I know some of you from serving on the contact committee. At the, the, from teaching many, um, children. And I even went to the school. So, uh, I prepared something, um, to say I know that we're early, um, in this process. And it's been difficult for me to imagine sharing this, uh, my heart is pounding. But I, I have such a love and admiration for, for my students and my colleagues, um, that, that I, I know that I'm brave enough, um, to share. So, uh, I know that we've gone through uncertain times before in school districts and this one in particular, and I know that it will happen again. And I also know that leadership can be thankless and tireless. I, I know that all of you in this room have experienced that more than I have. In prosperous times, leaders are invisible, uh, and, and difficult times, this is not the case, as I'm sure you're feeling. Uh, I would ask what meaningful sacrifices the central office is making as we make significant sacrifices in staffing for our students? And what actions it will take as your leadership continues to be visible during this attack on public education, not just here, um, but in our country. I would also ask how you can justify paying many of our staff members, like our professionals and our secretaries and our direct to study supervisors, many of whom have worked for the district for up to 10 years or more, um, less than a living wage, uh, uh, that's difficult for me to understand. While those in the central office, you, you can, you can see raises every single year and people are really comfortable, um, in many places in our district. Our principal, Jake McHerniss, often refers to what happens in the classroom as, um, the real work. And, and sometimes the actions of this committee, um, show that, that you don't share this perspective. And I worry about what happens to our students when their leaders lose sight of whom they serve. It's difficult for me to reckon with this process, uh, not because it isn't necessary. I understand that there are budget cuts, I understand, uh, what's happening. But I feel like there needs to be a little bit more humanity. It is unlikely that many of you, if any of you have seen the people who are getting tight and have seen them teach. Maybe you don't know their names or know their faces. Of course, there is always an excuse for this. We are busy, uh, and, and I understand that, but, but that doesn't lessen the responsibility that you have. So I know that I would be uncomfortable making these decisions unless I were really familiar with these schools and these staff. And I know that you have students in these buildings and that's really important. But what, what about the texture of the buildings and the classes that are shifting and changing and being eliminated? What does a phenomenal fourth grade class look like? What teachers are going to call to young children or taking care of elderly parents? What about when there's a challenge? How does an administrator know that? How does the teacher deal with that? How does a kid deal with that? Is it ugly? Is it beautiful? You know?
If you would just wrap up, it's probably three minutes.
Certainly.
By state, while I have to be, treat everyone equally.
Of course, um, and, and, um, I would ask who, like, who, who has, who do I have to let go because of this budget? And, and are we resilient enough to absorb that? And I hope that we are, um, but it's not always the case. And, and I also just want to add, I, I know that my time's up. I want to speak for the middle school. There have been times when we have been rebuffed, when we have attempted to build a bridge between us and this committee. We have earnestly invited you and board builders.
Your time is up, I can't.
Okay, I understand.
Michelle Pimble.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to speak quickly because I have a lot to say. I'm here today to express the deep concern over the proposal to eliminate the physical education position. This decision not only disregards Massachusetts DOE requirements of our own district policies, but also presents serious challenging, um, uh, challenges to the schedule. Places an undue burden on the remaining PE teacher, myself, and creates an inequitable education for our students. PE is a core subject that serves every student. And cutting PE position will significantly impact course availability and scheduling logistics. With fewer PE instructors, class sizes will in.
Okay, she won't listen to me, I'll go back to her when she's ready to listen. Rebecca Holm.
Hi, it's actually, uh, it's actually Josh Briggs. I just wanted to, uh, raise concerns about the design position itself. The fact that this would be the elimination of the design program, just pointing out that, uh,
Is there a problem with our technology or am I not paid hard?
Uh, I, I, yeah, I don't know. Maybe you should make a general announcement now, but this is like too important.
Yeah, I don't, I want, I need your name and address, that's part of the rules. Okay, Michelle, let's try again. Unmute yourself and state your name and address. Okay, let's start again. There we go.
Who's Josh?
Josh. Josh, unmute yourself and state your name and address and then you can start over.
All right, so it's Joshua Briggs, uh, we're a choicing family from Tarrington, in Tarrington, Massachusetts. So our, our concern about the cutting of the entire design program is that, uh, as we've been talking about building the high school, so much of the focus, very correctly in our opinion, is on this idea of vocational tech. And, um, this is the, and 21st century skills. And that's, I feel like that's the way we're pitching our high school. It's the argument we're making in our community because it is what our community wants. And by eliminating this entire program, we are eliminating the program in the middle school that addresses those two areas. It, it preps students in real 21st century ways. It is giving them actual, uh, skills. And in addition to that, it is a space in which, um, students are able to contextualize things like math through direct hands-on learning, which we know is one of the best ways to take these high-level concepts and, and cement them in a student's mind, particularly for students who don't necessarily process mathematical thinking in, um, in more traditional classroom ways. So it just, it was really surprising to us. And, and again, we absolutely understand, and I, I understand everything that's been said about the difficulty of these decisions and that we have to find the cuts somewhere. But it seems pretty tragic to lose, uh, lose an entire program, particularly when it is so the focus of what we are actually trying to do with our district and the direction we're trying to take our district in. And we feel like it actually undercuts the argument that we're trying to make about the high school that we, we want to build to our community. We're saying one of the reasons we, we need to build this is for these reasons. And then with our other hand, we're slashing down that program in our middle school. Thank you.
Okay, Joshua. Okay, anyone else? Person who couldn't hear me, they raised their hand again, I'll recognize them. Just give me your name and address, someone move ahead.
Very good. Just give your name and address.
Hello, can you hear me? My name is Michelle Campbell. I live at 105 Britten Hill Road in Salisbury, Connecticut, and I'm going to start again. I am the current PE teacher, one of the current PE teachers at Monument Mountain High School. I started to talk about
She's a teacher.
She's a teacher.
Yeah, she's a teacher.
I wish I could get her to just listen to me.
Okay, I unmuted myself. What would you like me to say? Excuse me?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So I started to say that I'm a current PE teacher, I've been teaching for eighteen years at Monument. And looking at cutting this position, you are really creating an unsustainable workload for the leftover PE teacher, that would be me. We need to find spots for over two-hundred-and-fifty kids for each semester to now take part in an elective, which we are actually looking to try to cut. PE is one of the only subjects that reach every single student in our school. And by removing this PE teacher, we are not only impacting a small substance, we are disrupting the education of the entire school population. No other position cut would have such a wide-reaching effect on our students' health and wellness education. Massachusetts law mandates that all students receive nine-hundred-and-ninety minutes of structured learning in physical education in every year. Our own school committee policy states that we must increase appreciation of physical fitness, and it's important in regard to good health. If we cut this position, we fail not only to meet our state requirements, but we also set, are cutting the principles set forth by our district. We're also looking at providing an equitable education to all of our students. And by producing this and possibly saying that sports could be counted as a credit for PE, we are not providing that to students who don't make a team, who don't have transportation, unless you're willing to put that forward, which obviously we saw that's really expensive, who might not be able to complete the entire season, and they're not getting the fundamental right of the education that they deserve. You're also, again, putting an overwhelming workload on the leftover person. You're looking at larger class sizes, you're looking at increased stress and burnout of the affected members of the department, and it's not sustainable or fair to any educator. I have been working here for eighteen years, and I feel deeply disrespected by the apparent lack of confidence in myself and my colleagues, highly educated professionals who have consistently provided the statement-icated education that our students deserve. The decision undermines not only our expertise, but also the very mission statement that Peter referred to at the beginning of this presentation. If you truly value this mission, it is clear that this course of action will not support it. And I hope that you reconsider this cut, because you're cutting a state-required class. You're not looking at an elective, you're not looking at things that I think are truly important to the education, but you're looking at something that's state-required, and you're not providing equity to our students.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else? No one else in the room? Okay, we are going to go into executive session.
Sorry, Steve. There's one more, Colleen Seward's hand just popped up.
Go ahead and state your name and address. Your honor.
Okay, great. Colleen Seward, sixty-five Oak Street in Sheffield. I'm the health and wellness teacher at Monument High School, and I would just like to validate and again, support everything that Michelle just said, and really urge the committee to reconsider this decision and to engage in conversation with the educators, the students, and the stakeholders that are involved in this situation. All of our students really deserve comprehensive physical health education, and cutting this position will not allow us to provide that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I move that the First Hills Regional School District School Committee enter executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty-one, Subsection A, Subsection Three, for a few minutes from now, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, executive session. Following the executive session, the meeting will adjourn.
Give her a second, give her a motion and a second. This has to be a rule, anyway, Allison.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Sarah Kennedy.
Yes.
Andy. Bill Floyd.
Yes.
Phil Fields.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah. Rich.
Yes.
And I. So we will go into executive session, we will now come back on, executive session.